Okay, so we're going to begin with our SCL check-in. And this is our social-emotional check-in. And we actually designed a grounding exercise for this social-emotional check-in. Grounding exercises are really helpful in refocusing your mind and your body in the present moment. And it's also really helpful to relieve any negative energy or tension that you may be having. So this grounding exercise is centered around deep breathing. So for this exercise, you're actually going to stretch out one of your hands in front of you. So that way, there's kind of space between each one of your fingers, just like it shows in the image. You're going to hold up your pointer finger from your other hand. And you're going to start at the bottom of your thumb. And you're going to use your pointer finger to trace up your thumb as you breathe -- take a deep breath in. And when you get to the top of your thumb, you will slowly breathe out as you trace down the other side. And so then you'll just keep repeating that same process of breathing in as you trace up one of your fingers and breathing out as you trace down the other finger. So let's just take about a minute or so to focus on our breathing and to use this exercise as a way to focus on our breathing. So we hope you really enjoyed being able to take a minute just to kind of focus on your breathing. There are so many health benefits to deep breathing exercises like this one. Breathing -- deep breathing can increase energy levels. It can lower stress levels. And it can provide relief from anxiety. And in today's world, our bodies, they respond to hundreds of stressors every day. So we encourage you to take moments in your busy days, whether it's one minute or many minutes, to stop and exercise some deep breathing. Again, this activity aligns to the Castle competencies of self-awareness and self-management. And as a reminder, the South Carolina Department of Education has embraced the Castle model for the integration of SCL in our South Carolina schools. As another reminder, we are your book study facilitators. And we are always open to further conversations on how implementation is going in your schools and districts. So always feel free to reach out to one of us. Okay, so in preparation for our discussion today, please have available your MTSS book, a writing utensil, a notebook or paper, and post-it notes if you have those available. You should have read chapter seven prior to this session. And you should be prepared to share those significant sentences, phrases, and words that you lifted from this chapter. We'll also want you to have the digital agenda open so that you can access all the needed links and resources for today's book talk session. Again, as a reminder, have your microphone muted when you're not speaking. Always feel free to use the chat feature. And if comfortable, we'd love to see you and have your cameras on.
So take a moment to review the virtual meeting norms and determine one area that you'd like to focus on utilizing completely during this session. And once you've identified your goal, type the norm in the chat to verbalize your commitment to the group. Okay, seeing lots of different ideas of how -- what your commitment is to the group. So thanks so much. And let's keep those in mind as we continue through our time together. All right, so today I want us to think about what we have read about in our session around the process of implementing MTSS in your schools. And in this chapter, it talked about how there are the options of simultaneous adoption in the implementing process, a staggered approach to integration process, or maybe your school or district has not even begun implementing MTSS, which is okay as well. So take a second to think about which process you are finding your school or your district in right now in terms of implementing MTSS. And again, type in the chat which process system you're using. Or if you're not, just type in NA, because we'd love to gather just some ideas of where our group is right now.
Audrey, it looks like there's quite a few simultaneous that are coming through.
Yes, and I was just about to type in for me. I have one district that's working simultaneously and another's doing a staggered approach. Okay, so as you're thinking about the process that you're using, we'd love for you to unmute yourself and share, again, which process your school is utilizing. And then think about, within that process, what's working for your school and what has your school learned? So if you are open to sharing, please feel free to unmute yourself. And again, share which process you're using, what you've learned, and what's working for your school. Anyone want to be a risk taker? Share your thinking? Pulling out my teacher language there.
Well, Audrey, I can try to get the conversation started. In many of the schools that I support, they're using the simultaneous approach. And in the chapter, it talked about a strength of this approach, meaning that it's acknowledging the importance of teaching the whole child. And I think that's what they see as a strength in their implementation process.
Good. I'm thinking of my school that is -- or district that's using a staggered approach and how they have a strong RTI process already in place. So they want to, you know, hone up those abilities, make sure there's a complete understanding of that process. And then be -- and within that, talk about how that supports MTSS. And so then they'll be moving into a long-range plan of how we later pull in the PBIS, Behavior and Social Emotional Supports. So I think they -- they're building on what their strengths are and working from there. They see that as a benefit for them. Anyone else? All right, so we're going to get ready to head out into our breakout rooms. And as you read chapter seven, we asked that you were thinking around the text rendering protocol of a sentence, phrase, and word. So hopefully, you had a chance to annotate in your book sentences, a phrase, or word that you feel really impacts and is important to your work and in your role specific to MTSS. So we will use this protocol as we go into our breakout rooms.
Just in previous sessions, you will type your name, breakout room, click the link at the bottom to join. Be sure to identify a facilitator who will pace the discussion, a timekeeper who will ensure that everyone returns to the whole group on time, and a speaker who will share their group highlights, connections, and questions. And we're allowing 20 minutes for this. So that means you would return to the group at 4:01. And remember, you can do this by clicking "Leave" in your breakout room and then resume for the MTSS book studies. All right, any questions before we head off to the breakout room? They're disappearing.
Is this a breakout room?
Uh...
It is?
No.
No? Okay, I'm traveling and trying to navigate.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Uh-oh, can we put him in a breakout room?
That's what I was just about to say. So let me see here.
I appreciate it so much.
Yeah, we want you to be safe.
I don't think so, because those are -- it's not set up as a breakout room, but as a different link. But what we can do is get the link for that meeting and put it in the chat. And he'd probably be able to click on it.
Yeah, he's in there.
And try to put myself into a room.
Okay.
Tina, you said he's in there?
No, he's in there because whenever I use -- I can use my phone and I click on that link and it'll open that document up. And if you scroll to the bottom of it, you can then click on a room. And it'll send you in there.
Gotcha. Audrey, I apologize. I was looking at the text rendering protocol and I thought we had the wrong protocol up there. So I was trying to figure out how to quickly switch it to sentence, phrase, word. And then -- so I apologize.
That's okay. That's what we're here for. All right, I'm gonna hop in my room.
Bounce out. This is somewhere. If I can find it. There we go. Yeah. Go to... Go here.
Oops, I'm sorry. I thought Audrey was back.
Yes, Ramona, it looks like we have two participants not back yet, so let's send a message real quick and we'll get them back.
Thank you. All right, we've got Audrey back.
I'm so sorry. I'm always in a group that we just go too hard. I'm not a good timekeeper. Oh my.
I was gonna say, we're gonna have to find a good timekeeper for you. It's all good. It's all good. All right, so, welcome back, everyone. I hope you enjoyed your conversations in the breakout room. You know what time it is. It's time for us to share our highlights, connections, and questions. So who's gonna kick us off?
I can, if you don't mind. And I apologize, I'm the reason we're late getting back in. I talk too much, so I apologize.
Tension afterwards.
Okay, that's about, that's where I should be. Yes ma'am. No, our group discussed some different things in regards to Chapter 7. One of the interesting things, one of our teammates viewed, or at least brought to our attention, that the school-wide PBIS program in regards to behavior sometimes doesn't adapt correctly with some of the internal functions of specific classrooms, such as special education classrooms in a self-contained setting, possibly some banned, some co-curriculars elective style, that they are handled differently due to various reasons. But we also discussed that, again, those components of PBIS are school-wide. So you can still close your door and incorporate some of those components, but again, maintaining the entire atmosphere of the PBIS and the school-wide system is something that we still can highlight. But there are certain things, such as special education classrooms and other co-curricular opportunities that we were having some conversation around, that it could look different, and that administration could possibly at least ease some of the anxiety of some of those teachers, or building-level administrators could at least have conversations with those teachers to at least alleviate some of that pressure on those specific classrooms. We also discussed the Elena Aguilar, the northern routed minded individuals, which would be myself and other individuals that just want to absolutely see something, go for it, and not look south. And so my takeaway from that was the patience in the installation process and kind of allowing that to fall into place with gentle nudging is something that we also discussed. One other takeaway was also, I think we were talking about, I think it was, no, I think it was, I think it was stage three, was the initial implementation really giving it that time to take root and not force it. And that's what I'm pleasantly engaged in that process and really been taking my time with that and seeing the rushed or hurried implementation process. I know firsthand that it doesn't work. And so I'm learning from experience and really taking the time with the initial implementation and viewing the capacity, taking stock and note into who and what and how, and really trying to implement a rooted system. So that is what we were talking about. I don't believe we really discussed any questions. Again, we were taking a little long, so that's our piece.
That was worth the wait. Thank you so much. Some very powerful conversation. Thank you. Who's got next?
I can go over what our group discussed. We kind of got hooked on the word autopsy when we're talking about autopsying some of our past practices. And then I thought about it and I was like, okay, we've had to bury some practices that we've used that were ineffective. And why not perform that autopsy and really pick them apart and look at why they didn't work? And it kind of goes with something else that our group was talking about, people's reluctance to change. Because of some of the past practices, people are very afraid when you present something new, and it makes them really reluctant to change. So if you can figure out what didn't work in the past and you can kind of find new avenues to take, it helps get everyone on board and more apt to make the changes that are necessary.
I love that. Sometimes when you find that you're stuck, you have, you need to do an autopsy or a substitute autopsy with analysis, which is, you know, autopsy is just making it kind of interesting language, but it's really just a deep analysis. So great, great contribution. Thank you all. All right.
I'm just gonna add in, I love that thinking around what did work and let's keep that going over this and let go of those things that didn't work as well. So, great thinking.
And I just wanted to piggyback off a little bit because it kind of went along with what me and Mary were talking about. And we talked about the two phrases that went along with the Hexagon tool to kind of really explore, you know, what we're doing right, and then is it really the right thing to do? And then to try to figure out how we can get that buy-in. And so like, we pointed out the question, or the sentence that said, like, just as it is helpful with student behavior providing choice or in terms of a vote is a powerful tool to increase ownership in the implementation process. And so that could kind of help with those who are sometimes a little reluctant to change if they feel like they're having more of a say in what is happening. And that's kind of what we kind of spend our time talking about.
Thank you. Choice is definitely an important factor to include when you're working with adult learners and kids too. You know, we as human beings just kind of like to feel as though we have some choice in the matter. So, wow, great discussions, guys.
Were there anything else? Does anybody else want to share any ideas before we move forward?
So at the beginning of this session, you put in the chat where you are currently with your MTSS implementation. The true goal is improve student outcomes, and any efforts at integration should be viewed in terms of whether or not they help us meet that goal. If we reach the point at which more integration does not make our system better, we may want to focus on other enablers until it does. So your team may want to consider opportunities where integration is logical and makes teaching easier. So as mentioned in the book, this Hexagon tool illustrates the key areas that should be addressed when evaluating a new practice or model for adoption. The shaded area helps you to reflect on the practices between the practice and the needs of the school or district. The white area helps to access what would be needed to implement the practice or model both fully and durably. As you go back to your school or district, use these questions to help evaluate your process or the current system that you have in place. So now that you've had a chance to, an opportunity to read about how the two systems could integrate, you may want to view the video as needed to plan or revise your MTSS framework.
All right, so at that time again, where we think about the now what? Now what will you do in response to today's book study and the conversations that we've had? So again, we want you to take out three post-it notes or draw those three boxes on your piece of paper. And for the next few minutes, write down three actionable steps. So one per post-it note or one per box, and decide which step you'll do first. And then of course, we would love if you could share one of those actionable steps in the chat box. So I'll give you about two or three minutes to create your actionable steps and to share one in the chat. All right, go ahead and head over to the chat box and jot one of those actionable steps for the rest of the group.
I see Mr. Callers' idea around meeting with grade-level teams to discuss protocols that could be effective. And that's just going back to that idea around voice and choice within decision-making and implementation. So I think that's a nice plan for next steps for a school.
I see some more reflect on what has worked, not worked in the past to facilitate implementation, looking at possible concerns, determining solutions for them, look at steps we can take as a team to become more effective and efficient. Do not rush the process. Yes, yes. Great. Well, keep them coming in the chat box. If you're still typing, we'll still take a look at them. Okay, so here's a few reminders before we end today. Our next and last book study session will be on February 25th at 3:30 PM. We will actually be jigsaw-ing the next three chapters, which are Chapters 8, 9, and 10. And then also, we will ask that we all read Chapter 11, which is the concluding chapter. So again, we'll jigsaw read those Chapters 8, 9, and 10. Those chapters in particular are case studies from different states. So Chapter 8 will highlight Oregon's MTSS implementation. Chapter 9 will highlight Florida's implementation, and Chapter 10 will highlight Michigan's implementation. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna have you choose one of these chapters to read. And ultimately, you will have an opportunity to share the information from your chosen chapter at our next book talk session on February 25th. So we're gonna actually ask you to sign up for which chapter you would like to read today. And here's what our signup will look like. So here's kind of an image snip, and we also have this Google Sheet attached on the digital agenda. If you look at the example line, it has me, Ricky, signed up for Chapter 8, Ramona signed up for Chapter 9, and Bettina signed up for Chapter 10. So when a row is complete, such as this example row, those are the individuals that will make up that small group when we get together for our last book talk session to talk about the information in these respective chapters. So you can sign up in a similar fashion using that link. We ask that you sign up today, so that way you know well in advance what chapter you're gonna be reading in preparation for our next session. So as mentioned, we'll be using the Jigsaw protocol. So as you read your chapter, write a summary or take notes of the key points you feel will be important to share with your group about the MTSS implementation presented in your chosen chapter. At our next book talk session, you'll have the opportunity to share these key points with your small group as well as discuss trends you find is significant across the different case studies.
All right, and so after you sign up for a chapter, please be sure that you head back to the digital agenda and you take a few minutes to complete the exit ticket for today's session. It is located at the top of the digital agenda and will be used.
It'll be used for feedback for us and also attendance for you during our session. And again, we're looking forward to our discussions next week, or in two weeks, on the 25th for our last meeting. If you have any questions, please feel free to stay on, otherwise we will see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you, have a wonderful week.
Thank you. Bye, Allison.
Thank you ladies. Sorry, I was filling out my, my exit ticket.
No, you're fine, I just wanted to say bye to you because I didn't get to talk to you.
Yeah, hold on, let me see if I can.
Yes, let me see, oh my goodness.
Hello?
Joy, joy.
Hello?
Shabby cheeks.
Hello, can anyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Mr. Dinkins, yeah?
Yeah, I, I missed a session last week. I attended my uncle's funeral and I, I was trying to figure out how, what did I need to do to make up our last week's session?
So we have to wait for the videos to be returned from the department office where they closed caption the videos before we can link them and, and share them, and then I can send them to you. But Marie, since you're on here, is it that participants can get credits for each session they attend, or do they need to attend the entire time?
Well, it's kind of set up that they could do the entire, to do the entire time, but I think when we do each individual certificate, it can be edited so that they could just get partial credit if you want to do that.
Okay.
So if I miss one session, I will get.
Will you say that one more time?
He said, will he get partial credit for missing one session?
Yes, and especially because of the situation, and we're sorry for your loss.
So I think he's, he's concerned about not getting full credit because of one missed, missed session. Is, is that right?
So is he asking that he wants to watch the video when, when the video's done? I think if that, if he does that, he'll get full credit, he should get full credit.
Yeah.
Oh, you're going in and out, we can't hear you.
Yeah, you're kind of clipping.
Okay, I, I was, I was trying to say that, whatever I need to do to make up the session, I want to make it up.
Okay.
Okay, as soon as the video is ready, then I'll, I will send it to you, I did see your email, just haven't received the video, so with the required closed captioning, so as soon as I have that, I will, I will get it to you.
You're welcome, thank you, be safe.
Thank you ladies, y'all have a good afternoon.